Wow.
Oh, I don't know.
Sure.
This is where you have to, this is that rule, right?
Absolutely. Because there's no time to have order in place. It's a time of the day. Just need to talk over that. And it's been in place forever. So it's not easy for them to pick up the phone and call. And they want to turn it off.
Well, I agree with Greg.
That's what I do. It's you get started.
So I also agree with you on part of this.
Yeah. But I appreciate that.
I think it would end a difficult state.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. The financial report ending January thirty first, two thousand and twenty. Everybody's with orders had a chance. Any questions? Questions, moving on to the next one, the specific purpose tax meeting. Dustin.
Few months ago, our back in the fall, we passed a resolution for specific purpose tax. We ran into the issue of some wording on that resolution. We had to come back and re-pass another one. Once we got that passed and submitted to the state, it was approved. We were finally able to have our first board meeting. At that board meeting, we were able to put a timeline together on the various issues we have with regards to bonding. Um, interest rates and different things like that. It was more so getting the formalities of all the paperwork together. Establishing officers, um, different things like that. Um, once we got all that done, we were able to discuss the topics of timelines as far as when we will see money. Um, since the city of Rawlins did not bond, um, we are not affected by that. But before they can distribute any of those funds, we have to get the bond issuance done, establish the interest rate and get that all taken care of. So they know the percentage rates that we will use whenever this distribution is made on a monthly basis. We have another meeting coming up in March and I will do another follow-up in, I believe, the first meeting in April. I'll have more detail. Uh, but the expected date of our first payment is June. With us not being, uh, not bonding, it's a little less critical to us. Because we are doing this over the length of the, uh, cycle. So it's not as critical to us. Um, in the next work session, um, the seventeenth, we will be discussing our specific projects. Um, we will not have another board meeting, the specific purpose tax prior to that. Um, but the last piece of information I did get was overall, um, there was currently, I believe it was for the first three months of the tax, there was approximately one point nine million in the total fund for all municipalities. That's not Rawlins specific. Um, and we will get a proportion, uh, appropriate portion of that, um, based on those distribution rates. So does anybody have any questions on that?
No. Thank you, Dustin. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. Need motion?
I move to approve the March third, two thousand and twenty city council agenda as presented.
Ms. Linda, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Nothing. Work will open online voting.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to the board appointment, fire civil service commission. Mr. DeBary.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we reappoint Terry Patterson to the file civil, to the fire civil service commission with a term ending February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Anybody have any questions? This is a reappointment. So there are no questions. Work will open online voting.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, so we'll be moving on to new business, the approval of the payroll. Mr. Durst.
Move to February second, two thousand and twenty through February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty payroll register for two hundred, seven thousand, two hundred seventy-two, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
Yes. First and seconded. You have any questions on payroll? Work will open online voting.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
Moving on to the accounts payable register. Ms. Linda.
I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty to February twenty eighth, two thousand, I'm sorry, yeah, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and ten cents.
Mr. Durst is seconding. You have any questions? Work will open online voting.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to a request, a landfill waiver for the paternal order of the Eagles, number four, uh, forty-three, twenty-six. Ms. Danielle.
Mayor pro temp and council. Um, the Eagles is moving out of their building. Um, they have two thirty-yard dump trucks of construction and demolition waste that they'd like to take to the landfill and have a waiver on. If you guys have questions, I will try to answer them.
Um, actually, I have one, Ms. Amy. This would be us doing away with any fee to them going to the landfill, correct? Yeah, and we have, we have provided waivers in the past for other projects.
I believe we provided for dangerous buildings and dangerous conditions. I'm not sure if we've got it just for, um, nonprofits, um, cleaning out, but I would defer to staff on that.
The other question I have is, do we know if they've, are they just going as they would say dark, which is they're not functioning? Or are they no more, no more?
I honestly don't know that. Um, I heard at one point that there was talk of them like coming back later, but that was through the grapevine and I'm not sure.
Ms. Linda.
How did this refuge get accumulated?
Um, it is actually carpet padding under the carpet, old cabinets and part of the bar that was in there. Um, so because that was part of their, um, operation that they added to that building, it has to be removed.
So they're getting the building bonds to someone else, the building does.
The building does, yes.
Mr. DeBary.
My take is that, uh, the paternal order of the Eagles have been around for a lot of years, lot of years. And they've done a lot of good in this community. I think they've struggled there at the end. They're having, not getting enough membership and things of that nature. I personally don't have a problem giving them a waiver. I, I, I don't think we're setting any kind of a precedence because I think we can take cases like this, uh, on a one-to-one basis with whoever applies or waiver, right? That's my take. And, uh, if you need a motion, I would make a motion to approve the, the fee waiver request from the fraternal order of the Eagles.
And it's just for the disposal of those two.
For the disposal of those two items, yeah.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
As far as you know, it's just, I guess not that they're getting the building, they're just removing their stuff from the,
Yes.
So now, now by them taking it out, then the other person could potentially re-rent this building.
Correct, yes. I talked to Pam and that is my understanding. She said it's just their items such as the bar or cabinets. She said a lot of it is carpeting and padding. It sounds like that's a majority of it.
So I guess, I'm not necessarily against it, I just struggle with you voting up two dump trucks and then saying, oh, well, we can't do this and we need a waiver. Was, like, was this, did this come out of the blue? Does anybody know, like, was this not expected? Did they?
They didn't renew their liquor license.
Yeah. That was the first indicator, the non-doable of the liquor license, that there was, there was not going to be any, any continued business.
Especially with a nonprofit, like, I'm not really opposed to it, I guess I just feel like I have somebody who wants to say something.
Somebody staring at you.
Uh, so this was placed on my desk, um, last week. That's why I decided to put it in front of you guys. Um, it is my understanding, based on the information I got, they have no money left. Um, they're closing it down, it's done. There's nobody left and.
What am I, is it a problem?
Essentially, um, so.
Danielle, you have something else on that?
Um, Sherry was just showing me the municipal code. Um, it's chapter eight point one eight, but it, it talks about that you guys have the ability to do a waiver, but it does also refer to dangerous conditions. Um, so I don't know that.
Doesn't necessarily fit in that.
Yeah.
Ms. Linda.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, um, my concern is, well, I was thinking about the code. In that code, does it say that the city manager may do that? I know we changed this, this is why I'm asking.
So it does say such application would set forth, the financial need of the owner shall be made through the city manager's office for the consideration and final approval by city council. So you guys would have the final determination.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Quinn.
Well, I have been on the board of directors of the thrift store here in Rawlins for the last fifteen years and there have been, I just want to, people have brought pickup logs full of junk and put it in our dump store or bring things to our store. And there have been times when we have toyed with the idea of having to close the thrift store in Rawlins because of finances, no matter how thrifty we are, how hard our workers work and how much good it does for the people in Rawlins that really need the thrift store. So maybe there's a way of doing a partial, a partial waiver or, or something, but.
A fee reduction.
A fee reduction because, um, I certainly don't resent, uh, resent having to pay our fair share. On the other hand, like I say, we have really struggled for years sometimes to make utility bills payments and have to pay for other people that should have put their things in the dump before they brought them to us.
Ms. Linda.
I'm kind of wavering yes or no on this and I'll tell you why, because I think if we do open this up, we do set a precedent. We've set a precedent through, for helping abandon properties because it's in the best interest of the city. So this is debris out of a, what was a leased building. So I'm thinking if we say yes, here we go. We're going to have to do this for other people. But I guess the question is, is it in the best interest of the city? And that probably is yes. So anyway, I guess help me and help me decide, I guess.
I guess I would just ask, and you have no legal, I mean, is there, as, as far as legality on this, is?
So the funding typically for all landfill waivers or reductions or community cleanups, um, is born from the dangerous building fund. Because it's an enterprise fund, you have to take money and replace it at the landfill. You can't just simply write that portion off. To the best of my knowledge, we only entertain these issues when there was a dangerous building or a dangerous condition. But again, um, I would defer to the code itself and, and how it specifically identifies the, the waiver.
Okay. So the problem I have here is this, if it was someone's rental house and regardless of who was in this rental house, they just move out and leave everything inside the house, who ends up being responsible for what's inside the house?
The owner of the.
The owner of the house. The owner of this building would then be responsible for everything that is not taken out of this building.
Correct.
That, am I correct in that? So it's not a dangerous building. It's a rental where someone is moving out and they're leaving their stuff.
To my knowledge.
That's essentially all it is. Um, I agree with Mr. DeBary about the good that they have done in the community, but that doesn't put the responsibility on us or anyone else for them to have taken care of this prior to knowing when they were going to be closing down and figuring out, because they did not reapply for their liquor license. So they, they've known for a while that they weren't going to be doing this, so.
That's, that's, I agree. That's my struggle is that.
That's where I'm, that's where I'm at.
You know, another question is, you wonder who's going to pay for it? They don't have any revenue. The owner of the building.
It's, it's still incumbent upon the owner of this building.
It's a one-time thing for an organization that's been here, gosh, way, way back. You know, I remember when they'd sponsor the marble tournaments way back in the late fifties.
I don't even know what a marble tournament is.
But anyway, they did, they, they've done a lot over the years and, and I could say at the end, they, like every organization, the Moose was a good example. We had the Moose Hall here for years and years and they just ran out of, uh, members and they just didn't have enough to keep it going, so they ended up dissolving. And so I think, I think it's a good gesture on behalf of the city that we're working with them to, uh, clean it up and just get their stuff and throw it out, they're done and you're out of the way.
That's why I ask whether or not we know that they're actually done and they're not just going dark.
Right.
That would be my worry.
I would think if they applied for liquor license again though, that we could approach them.
Right.
And maybe get some revenue that way.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay. Work will open online voting, please.
Carla, I'm going to go ahead and vote yes because mine turned itself off.
He said yeah. Oh, Linda, okay.
Okay, online voting is closed and the motion carries with five yeas and council member Smith voting aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, guys.
We're moving on to the first reading, amending Rawlins Municipal Code Title Nineteen zoning.
Mayor pro temp and city council, um, do we need a motion first or do you want me to go ahead and?
I'll go ahead and request a motion first.
Okay.
You get a motion, Ms. Wells.
I move to approve on first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rawlins Municipal Code Title Nineteen zoning.
At first? And first and seconded, Mr. Durst.
So I guess I'm going to just be really honest with you guys. I'm not entirely sure how to approach this. Um, so I was hoping maybe you guys would give me some guidance. Um, I know that this is something we've been reviewing at a lot of work sessions. Um, I did attach a, um, summary of changes for you guys, just to try to make it a little bit easier with the page section and the change. Um, I do want to make sure you guys know that I didn't put every punctuation or capitalization thing. This is just, um, the major changes that we're presenting. Um, I attached how many times we've met over it. I guess I'm, I'm just not positive how you want me to present it, I guess. So I'm open to whatever you guys want there, if you have questions or.
I feel like we covered it early.
We, yeah, we did. Definitely. I, I just don't want you to feel like I'm avoiding or just, yeah. Because it is a lot of information and there are a lot of changes. Um, you know, I could talk to you guys for hours really, but I don't think anybody wants to do that.
I personally don't think we, okay.
Mr. DeBary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I wrestled with this too, but, uh, I, I think a start was that I was looking for a number on a grandfather clause. And my thinking was that maybe we, um, that I would make an amendment, amendment to, uh, to say that we would grandfather it from the beginning of this Title Nineteen to when we pass it, which would be, I believe, nineteen ninety-eight, I think it was, when it started, May the fifteenth, nineteen ninety-eight, I believe, or eighty-nine maybe. But anyway, having said that, uh, that would be a start and then we'd get past that part. And then we'd have two more readings to, to.
Right.
Read some more things and pick up some more stuff and wrestle with it.
Right. So at all three readings, you guys have the ability to make any amendments. Um, if you make any amendments tonight, those, I'll make those changes and those will be presented at the second reading. And then if you wanted to make more, you could. So, and I know that is something that we talked about in, um, pretty good length at a couple work sessions, was the grandfathering date. Um, at that time, a majority of you wanted to do it from the date of adoption. So I've not entered that date yet, but it is highlighted, um, in here and says date of, I think, third or adoption, I believe it says. Um, so if you guys wanted to change that and go back ten years or whatever that is, then, like I said, that, that amendment can be made at first, second, or third reading.
Okay, Ms. Linda.
Um, I would support DeBary in that motion. I think it was a motion.
Yeah. I haven't made it yet, but I would.
Oh, well, anyway, we're discussing. Um, because of a lawsuit that the city had in previous years, it went all the way to the Supreme Court and came back down. And in that lawsuit, it talked about grandfathering and that kind of issue. And therefore, um, having had that process go forward, I think we need to leave all of that behind us and put the date in ninety-six or ninety-eight or whatever it is, because that avoids all that discussion.
So, and I, that's the date, um, I believe that's in there now.
Right.
Yeah, let me get to that page. I think it's May fifteenth of nineteen eighty-nine, but it's way at the bottom, so it is, okay.
Look it on.
So. I, I think that lawsuit was nineteen ninety-something and so anything we need to make sure it's like nineteen ninety-six or ninety-eight or something, pass the Supreme Court date.
Hey, Mr. DeBary.
So, and having said what I said, um, I would go ahead and, and make a motion to amend Title Nineteen to read as of May, uh, May of nineteen eighty-nine.
So.
May fifteenth of nineteen eighty-nine.
That is what it says now.
To, to grandfather.
Change or to just have it changed up because it just. Uh, so his motion, uh, the motion was as presented, you're presenting it with the publication or the data, it becomes effective. So you would revert back to the current, um, date of May fifteenth, nineteen eighty-nine. So it would be a change.
Okay, just, I want to make sure I got that right. Do you want the section? Um, it's section nineteen point five, two point oh two oh.
Nineteen point five, oh two oh?
Nineteen point five, two point, point oh two oh, and it's item A specifically.
As, as the date of original adoption of Title Nineteen.
So with his amendment, it would say all legal uses of property which exist as of May fifteenth, nineteen eighty-nine.
Okay.
I, I agree with that.
Ms. Linda.
It would be my amendment.
Amy, with that, you know the lawsuit to which I'm referring, that I prefer not to say, does that get past those dates in that particular Supreme Court?
Yes, because you're not expanding the dates. You are, you are maintaining the status quo. Currently, uh, with the previous adoptions, we provided grandfathered, uh, ability from May fifteenth, nineteen eighty-nine. So it had to be in place on or before that date. Anything after that was not considered grandfathered or, or non-conformity.
Okay.
So this is.
The state is.
Status quo.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Durst.
Not a hundred percent, but I don't believe he had a second, so if he did not have a second.
He did not have a second. So it's been, um, the amendment has been first and seconded. Are we typed in?
We got that, I'll clear that.
Is that mud clean over there yet? Yeah? We're good? This is, we're voting on the amendment.
And then we.
Move to add the grandfather clause of nineteen point five, two point oh two oh, May fifteenth, nineteen eighty-nine as the actual date of.
Yes.
This code.
That's, and that's when, that's our legal cutoff.
Yeah, and that's the date that's in current code. Yeah, so we would just, instead of changing it, keep that.
Okay. Everybody has that on their screen? Okay.
Was that the only question?
That was it.
I think we covered it. We did, yes.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
Now we'll be voting on the main issue? Mr. DeBary.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to amend the Rawlins Municipal Code Title Nineteen zoning.
Okay, at the first.
Those motions were made by Jaclyn and Erin. The initial motion was made by council member Wells and council member Durst.
Right.
So, so do I?
Already on the floor.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it was already on the floor. Oh, okay, I think, okay.
And you amended it.
I amended, oh, that's right, okay.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
Thank you. Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that hard work, holy cow.
Lot of work.
Years of work. All right, we'll be moving on to a resolution, uh, for grant submission, Division of Victim Service Grant by the Rawlins Police Department. Mr. Palmer.
Honorable pro temp mayor and, uh, council. This will be the third time we've come before council to go out for a biennium grant for the vi, to the Division of Victim Services. It'll be over, uh, June thirtieth of this year, the current, when that where your answer, this is to renew our grant to go forward for another biennium. Um, we're asking for a hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ten cents. Also, just to remind everybody, this, um, grant, um, has one full-time victim's advocate and one part-time. This new one that we're going for, we're going to add, ask for another part-time victim's advocate. We'll have two part-time. Just, I'll give you some statistics real quick. We had, they had four hundred and sixty-four cases last year that went through, that they had to deal with, the three victims advocates. And, but you got to times that by ten, because that's how many times, on average, they have contact with that victim. So that's four thousand, six hundred and forty.
Contacts.
Contacts, three people, three courts. They have district court, circuit court, municipal court that they have to attend to. There's also going to be some educational programs that they're going to be providing to the community through the schools. And with that, they want the part-time person to help in the office way, the full-time victims advocates out there doing the teaching. So with that, it's.
You got a motion, please, Ms. Wells.
I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the submission of the Wyoming Office of the Attorney General Division of Victim Services Grant for the Rawlins Police Department in the amount of one hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ten cents.
Ms. Linda.
I second.
Moved and seconded. We have any questions? Mr. DeBary?
Yeah, I take it there's not a matching grant, is it?
Kind of weird how there, there is a match, but it's her salary, so everything else is reimbursed. Does that make sense? So her salary is what we, oh, and it's not even that, quite that much, but that's her, the match that we provide is her salary.
Okay.
And then the other positions are reimbursed as they occur.
You've had two part-tens in the past, haven't you?
Yeah, we have. In the past, we have.
So this will just increase your capacity.
Yeah, it'll make it with the three of us. Um, what we want to do is split that part of time. Um, Tina works four days Monday, half-days in the mornings. So this, we're hoping this new one would be the afternoon and then maybe she's off on Fridays and this will be work Friday. So it'll be like we have a full-time.
An extra full-time. Any other questions? Work will open online voting, please.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you. Ms. Linda. Moving on, we're going into executive session. Ms. Lynda?
Yes, I move we go into executive session at 8:18 PM for pursuant to Wyoming Statute 1644052 to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice or dismiss level of public officer, professional person or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person or officer, unless the employee, professional person or officer requests a public hearing. A governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during examination of a witness, any or all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision to, in executive session or nine, to consider or receive any information classified by confidential law.
Seconded. And first and seconded? Right, yeah. Any questions? On this before? We'll go open online voting?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
Okay, we'll be going into executive session.